Um, I believe uh. There was some documents that were sent out. Sean, I assume you're handling that part. You representing Che?
I can, yes.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I. I'm actually here for our observation um. I was not anticipating reporting uh. Uh, I mean, we can open up the documents. I have no problem with that. We can go over it as a group. If necessary, um, but I was really here to introduce myself to the team. Uh, and those those that.
Yeah. Sorry.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Sorry, um, Counselor Edwards. So Che's on vacation this week. I don't know that he updated Sean about the REO and. Um, you know what Sean will be doing going forward and his responsibilities to the REO, and I'm sure. Che probably didn't share the reports with Sean. Um, so Sean asked if he should come today, and I said, yeah, just to introduce yourself and, you know, get acclimated with the team, so. Um, just. I don't think Sean was prepared to report, so if we. Don't want to put him on the spot, but um. I thought that he should come at least to introduce himself, even in Che's absence, without kind of giving a rundown from Che. Yeah, I thought it would still be beneficial if he came just to say hi to everybody.
Well, welcome and and please introduce yourself. I I'm, you know, I have the pleasure to know who you are. Uh, but everybody, uh, you know, another one, the good employees for the city. Uh, and so Sean, please introduce you to the team, and I may ask everybody just go around the room and introduce themselves to you as well.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Sean Farm, I recently took the role as Senior. Project Manager for DTAC. Um, I have been given, you know, kind of a higher level overview. Of the REO and everything that it entails. I do apologize. Um, I I received the report not too long ago. Uh, today, so I I was not um, prepared, as I said previously, to report on it. Moving forward, I'll make sure that if it is something. Uh, that I'm sitting in on this, uh, and the expectation is that I'm reporting, I will do so. Um. But again, Sean Farm, Senior Project Manager for DTAC, uh, I look forward to working with everybody.
Okay. Um. Yo, quick question. So I don't understand the abbreviations. And what department is it? I I guess I'm a little confused.
Sure, it's uh, the Department of Technical Assistance and Compliance, so I work under uh, Patrice Swan.
He's taken the place of Aloy Toppin, who backfilled Hope Button.
Okay, Aloy. Congratulations to Aloy. Um. It could have, obviously, you know, myself, Fiore, could you introduce yourself to Sean? Uh, he may know who you are, and then. Uh, we'll do the same for Liz and for Frank, please.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, so yeah, I'm Fiore Grissette, I'm with. Ironworkers local seven uh. Uh, Business Agent for about twenty-four years, also a Springfield resident my whole life.
Uh, Liz?
Yep. Hi, Sean. Um, my name is Liz Wembuwi. I'm the Director of Diversity and Community Engagement at uh Fontaine, and I've been working with. Um, Frank and Che and the REO Committee um, on the DeBerry Swan, uh, Midruss School Project. Nice to meet you.
Sean, I'm Frank Pear. I'm a Project Executive for Fontaine Brothers. Uh, we've. Just completed the uh, the Berry Swan School.
And Mr. Charlie Payne. Uh. Muted?
Uh, yep. Uh, hello, thank you. Uh, I'm a I'm a guest. I appreciate the Counselor Edwards. Gives me the respect of uh, having me introduce myself. I'm from the Carpenter's Union and I uh. I love being part of the REO and everything it does to create work in the city for uh. Um, people that um, might not have other opportunities.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, thank you all for the introductions. Thank you, Counselor.
Well, typically, uh, what you have, I'm uh, Liz and Frank, uh, they obviously have been one doing one of the biggest, largest projects we've dealt with, so. They've been regulars for the last couple of years. Uh, Charlie, his and his team with the carpenters. Um, they've been part of us uh, in some iteration since our inception back fifteen years ago. And of course, um, yeah, myself. And Fiore, we are the original. Uh, REO members uh, from its inception. Uh, and Jose Delgado will be replacing Counselor. Alan, uh, he's moved on and um, obviously, as you might have heard. As he's uh, Jose's on vacation. I'll try to follow up with him during the week and try to spend some time with him, kind of update him. But uh, and I'll encourage him also to reach out and have conversations with. Lindsay and Fiore particularly, um. Since um, you know, you guys, your perspective of the REO might be quite enlightening, and I'm not gonna assume everybody looks at. The REO even as a member with the same lens as I look at it, so. The the multiple perspectives always helps people to kind of find their footing. Especially coming right off the box and off the street, and may have been heard of it, but may not compete completely familiar with our ups and downs and. Travails, so. Um, that being said, they did send out some paper. Fiore, did you have a chance to look at the paperwork that was sent out to you?
Yeah, I actually was just gonna make a quick comment, so. Um, for whoever saves it in a uh, the format they just sent it, the problem is. It's it's non-openable, so when you look at this particular one for the uh, Athletic Complex, we have a bunch of um. There there's no numbers because it wasn't opened up enough, so if they save it in a PDF, they gotta make sure that they open it up enough. To allow the numbers to uh, reflect in it, that's all. Uh, yeah, they were PDFs.
So you you can't sort of, I.
It looks like the project's fairly new. A hundred and five hours for Maroy. I mean, I'm jumping ahead. Uh, two or three contractors on it, so there's only two hundred and twenty-nine hours for the whole job. It just, like I said, if you can open it later to convenience, you'll notice that. Oh, you know what? Maybe because there's zeros there. I I have no, I'm just, just trying to point out, normally when you see.
Which which file is it? Which file is it? I'm sorry.
Uh.
The dug in amenities.
Athletic Complex. Then again, I guess I'm speaking out of turn because there's all zeros anyway. Um, so I don't, I don't know what. I was just looking at that division, and I'm so used to seeing. That they're not open enough to get real numbers to show, but they're all zeros anyway, so I guess it's irrelevant. Never mind.
Yeah, I think it's just the formula. Um, and if Sean's the one doing this reporting going forward, Sean does reporting very well, and he'll be able to fix all those.
Cool. Yeah, you're right. It's formulas. No big deal.
Okay, yeah, I can, yeah, I can see it if you turn it, uh, yeah, I guess, yeah, just turn it sideways, I saw. Um.
Um, I was gonna say, I mean, I do have the email up and can share the screen if it's at all helpful for the group.
Yeah, actually, um, yeah, just for the sake, uh. I'm pulling up, trying to pull it up now, looking at things. I can see the numbers. On mine. But I have to kind of make it. This is, I have DeBerry. And uh. You you were talking about um. The other, a different project though, right, Fiore?
Yeah, I I get it. I guess it's just. Used to looking at stuff when you see all these weird numbers, that means they didn't open enough. But Lindsay is correct. If you didn't put a formula in, those I was putting formulas, all zeros anyway. So it, uh, again, my brain was just stuck in. In a mode today, uh, in the million of a hundred things, so. But yeah, I was just looking at all the odd numbers. No big deal. It's it, there's only two contractors or three with hours, so we're all set.
Okay, well, I'm I'm do a little piece of, if you don't mind, I might do a little piece of housekeeping, and then we'll get right into Fontaine's numbers, which I have. Um, that was, that can read. Um. Can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion, motion, accept the minutes in. Uh, minutes unless there's any additions, corrections, or deletions.
Second.
Motion been made in second here, no questions. All of a favor, please say aye.
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 And uh, so my eye from Fiore.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um. Let me go back to. Uh, Liz, would you like to kind of go over your numbers uh, and give us a, an overview? You're you're pretty much done now, correct?
Yes, yes, uh, pretty uh, pretty much, and um. Frank, I don't know if you want to jump in with any uh, particular um, updates, and then we could take a look at the numbers.
Yeah, um. Melvin, in April. What we did is we put a top uh, base coat on a parking lot, the new where the old Berry School was. We took down the old school, built a parking lot. And put a binder on it, and then in the spring, in April, we'll have um, gaglu dujia will come back out. And put the top coat on, and there's some line striping, and that's primarily the balance of the work. There's a handful of trees that need to be installed as well.
Well, um, it looks beautiful. Um, I have heard nothing but uh, wonderful comments about the building itself, and uh. From my understanding, the kids really like it. The teachers think it's outstanding, so I I I would tip my brow if I was wearing a brown, but. You know, I tip my hat to you. Um. And um. Liz, would you like to comment? Have any questions?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make the report a little bit bigger. Hopefully, that's. Helpful to folks. Um. All right, can you see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, crazy. Yeah, so we um, ended up with thirty-one percent of folks being folks of color. Um. Five point seven percent being women, um, five percent veterans, and nineteen um, percent residents. Um. So what China will be meeting about probably um, next week. Um, is, you know, looking at what the additional information that certainly um, Che, the committee uh, will need. Um, in terms of an overview for all of that reach activities that we did throughout the project. Um, again, those, you know, really included, you know, working with organizations like Community Works, uh, you know, posturing. Um, you know, at local churches, you know, continuing to have conversations with um. With folks, you know, regarding their participation um, on all of the uh, REO categories, so. Um, you know, we certainly, you know, don't see this as sort of our, you know, submission, and we're gone. Um, we obviously want to be part of. Um, everything that the city's doing, you know, in terms of, you know, continuing to to work um. To push our um subcontractors to, you know, to do better for um, projects going forward, so. Um, if you know, there's any, you know, thing that we can do uh, going forward, please certainly, um, we'd welcome that that feedback. Um, from from the committee. But I'll just stop there. Um, yes, Fury, I think I just saw your hand up.
Yeah, um, and I I did hear you were done. Hold on, shit, hold on. Shit. Uh, are you guys hearing me say shit? Am I live? Okay, so I'm sorry. I apologize, but I thought I still had myself on mute.
Yeah, just use some toilet paper.
Um, my bad, I'm sorry. So anyway, um, so listen, I, you know, to be fair. To you guys, um, you know, again, I'm trying to quickly go through the list, trying to check some stuff off. Uh, I'm I I'm in my my first inclination, you look at ironworking company, of course. You have a company called United Steel. They are out of Connecticut. Uh. Two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight hours year to date. Technically, when you. I mean, I want to be clear that. So those who are new realize. Technically, if they don't, I want to be clear about this because it can get confusing. If they never hire anybody from Massachusetts. They are exempt from the residency requirements. Okay, so without knowing who their employees were. You could deduct if there were no residents. You could take the two thousand. Three hundred and fifty-eight point seventy-five hours out of your. Residency number, which will get that number to look a little bit. Uh, uh, better. It's 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 apples. I want to compare apples and apples and be fair. Um, so again, if you were to look at other out-of-state contractors. Zero, as soon as they hire the first Massachusetts, so there's a crane operator and he is on their payroll. It it now jacks him back into Massachusetts. He would have to meet the residency requirement. So again, I didn't know if, how many other contractors are based out of state. But if you want to look at those contractors, you would have to go back and look in, make sure nobody was from. Massachusetts, and if so, you could retract those numbers from the. Total, which would bring that nineteen percent back up, okay?
Okay, th- thank you. Thank you so much for that uh, clarification. I appreciate it. We can certainly um, do that, and you know, go back in and um. And plug that information.
But that. I mean, it's. That would raise up the the residency numbers if we took them, United Steel. If it's appropriate.
Yes, Counselor Edwards, I believe that's what Fury was, yes, was just mentioning.
Liz, after you've done those recalculations, uh, which I don't expect you to do right at this moment, could you forward that back out to the committee?
Absolutely.
Numbers.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to be able to kind of do a final report on the project. Um, who, the whole, and I think it'd be appropriate to have the most accurate numbers. Um. You know, in fairness, they are all input. Opportunities. Uh, go ahead, Fiore, I see you still.
So I mean, again, so you know me, Melvin, I I get frustrated, and the problem is, it's not like this is, problem is, we are moving forward. The problem is, I look at a report like this, and I look at contractors. And I look again, I pick, so everybody, to be fair to everybody else, I started five hundred hours. Anybody below that, I'm not even gonna worry about it. My point is, that's my starting point. So when I'm looking at these contractors. Um, we do do a a union and a non-union thing, but you Mass Amers, I don't think we need to do that, but I, what I would like to do. Is try to figure out, again, I get, right, this is our, as the city. You know, when you look at these contractors, how many jobs have these guys done? For the city or on city projects, is again, if you're looking at some of these numbers, and again, I'm not gonna pick out any one contractor. If we still have zeros in women or or, you know. You know, say, that's just for women category. That seems to be always the hardest. Veteran. Guys don't ID, but that again, could be a problem area. My point is. If if this is seven or eight projects later. What is the problem? How many jobs? I'd like to know how many jobs these people have been on. To say, geez, eight jobs later, and they're still not doing it, you know, still got zeros, something's wrong. It's it's an overall picture to show that something's wrong with this, so I don't know if that's something we can eventually track. Uh, not for today's conversation, but I just want to make it a point that I think this is necessary so that we can look at some of these contractors. And try to say, you know, six, seven, eight, three, five, when does it stop? What do you, what are you really doing about it? Because I don't want to take it on an individual basis when it's compiling from job to job to job, and not, I'm not saying it's consistent to buy link. I'm just trying to point out, we don't know that until we see a statistic. Catch to this someday, someday, not today, okay? If that makes sense.
I I kind of, and I'm not gonna put Sean is new, so I'm not, and I'm not gonna assume I know to what, you know, degree he is aware of things, but I know that. The city has institutes, or at least I'm aware of the 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 rumblings that they're doing some new things. Uh, there's some expansions and some anticipation. They they have a vision for how to move not just the REO, but hiring in general. Across the city uh, forward. Um, and um, so I think. That, you know. This, it would, could possibly be appropriate at the next meeting to have Che prepared to have a conversation about. What Sean and in Che are working on. At the uh, you know, the, you know, they've been charged by their. Higher-ups or the administration to move forward with. Um. Liz will have us an updated number, and I I appreciate that. Um. It's consistent. I mean, what you're saying is the same thing I've been saying for years, and. I think they know, they've heard it. I don't know how they solve it. Uh, you can get the numbers. Um, but then when it comes down to, you know, just be prepared, Sean, for that question to be asked again at the next meeting. Um, you know, and I think that, you know, the context of. How do you uh? How do you identify the people that are consistently bidding for the project, that are never uh, feeling fulfilling the numbers? Um, I wish, to be honest with you, all the contractors that came in were as good as Fontaine, in terms of least putting in the effort. Uh, you know, no expectation. I, this has been outstanding to be able to work with them and. Not expecting perfection from anyone, but they've done a really, really good job, if nothing else, to hear every month. That I've asked to hold a meeting, they bring me good numbers as much, or they they bring me the numbers that they have. And uh, they actually, you know, they've hired somebody to actually oversee this type of stuff. So if every general contractor was bidding on city projects was least put in the effort, then I'd be much. Um, very much pleased to hear that that was the case, and um, so. Liz or Fiore, uh, Lindsay, go ahead, Fiore, I see you.
I just want to clarify, so I'm not, again, the the whole goal of what I'm trying to get to is. It's not what did you do on this job? You know, again, they are supposed to be showing an effort. Uh, and I think we have a letter from the roofers that, you know, reflect Greenwood on a different job. My point is, what are they doing? Not on this job, but when you compile it into eight jobs. And it shows the pattern that, you know, if they're making, again, I'm not. Trying to say, I wanna, I just want to make sure that people are making a real effort and continuing to make an effort. Even if you never succeed, at least you're trying. Your hardest, and again, we, you and I both know, Melvin, when we had that, what is your, what is your try? And you see an ad that I got eighty, uh, two hundred ironworkers, and and when you look at the ironworker ad. I I mean, rather than guy that met the criteria, that's that's not a real request. My, you know, they're making an effort. I don't have a problem with anybody. I'm just trying to point that out.
Well, I think is, is I guess, the, and the point is, is simply this. That is what you're complete, which is suggested is, does it exist? Are there any, are there anybody on this list? That have been consistently, you know, uh, uh, over the years, doing the same bid on the same project? Work in the city on a private project wouldn't be applicable. Because we have no oversight of private projects. It would only be city projects, so any. I mean, that's that's the only, are, is there a company that's on this list? That has done six, five, seven, eight projects for the city? Or are they doing consistent business within the city and occasionally doing a city job? So, I mean. Um, not gonna go look on a witch hunt for it, but.
I'm not either. It's it's just a point of. Uh, I wanna, we never see what efforts are being made, and again, I don't know if we're supposed to, I'd have to read the REO. Again, it'd be nice to really know what effort contractors are making out there, and again, only the general contractors dealing with them. We don't know the efforts being made, so my only point is, when I keep looking at these numbers. It's just, what did they do? How does it continue? Again, they're looking at this, this one job. But we as a whole need to say, you know, what effort overall has been going on? And again, I I'm not going backwards. How do we, so we can put this as a topic of discussion, if we're privy to what. This might be a perfect question. Are we privy to the efforts made by contractors that start, that. You know, start out of the gate slow and keep reflecting zero through the duration of the job, something along the lines of that. We'll figure it out in the future, but thank you for your time.
Okay, that's that's fair enough. I just, um. If if. If this, if the construction trades related to this municipal con- vertical construction was the only ones that were struggling to get employees. Then I guess I'd have a different attitude toward conversation, but unfortunately, um. I need truck drivers. I need people at McDonald's. I need people in restaurants. I mean, I can't think of industry right now, hotels. I can't think of an industry where people in Springfield could possibly be employed. Where they're full-employed, other than individual companies that are fortunate to have fully, be fully staffed, but um. You know, it's a societal problem in the sense that, you know, we're not, and it's not unique to Springfield, you know, all across the country. You've got on one hand, people who are, need to be employed, can't find employment. On the other hand, I got manufacturers, companies who can't get employees. And there's there's a divide in between the middle, and I'm not smart enough to solve that divide. Um, so, uh, but I appreciate it. Um, Lizzy. Liz, I'm sorry, Liz or Lindsay? Um, either one of you have anything you want to comment on or add, because actually, Fontaine is the only company that is before us, and um. I kind of like to uh. Give them some deference. They 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 brought the numbers. She's gonna send us some revised numbers. Um, and it's been a real pleasure to work with you guys and and be able, you know, for you to show up all the time, bring me good numbers. You know, in a category, certain categories, and ones that are falling short. I don't think it's a lack of effort on your part. Uh, is it appropriate to ask if you guys have anything else in the pipeline where I'd be continuing to see you guys after the paving is done?
At that particular site, probably not. Um. We're in there this week as the kids are off for winter vacation. Doing punch list, touch-up paint. You know, tighten up a door, this and that, whatever is on a punch list is what's happening today. Or this week, but then in April, we'll be out there, like I said, paving and some wrapping up the landscaping, and then. Uh, that that's it for that project. Um, I, I do have a thought, though, in regards to what Fiore was saying. So there's, and not to get into a a long conversation, but there's two types of. Ways that we hire subcontractors. There's the file subbid. Trades. And then there's the non-file subbid trades. So the file subbid trades. We can more or less pick and choose who we want to bring to the table. And then when we go to award that project. Myself and Liz sit down with the with the tradespeople. We go through the contract, we go through the specs, we we go then through a uh, what we call a buyout sheet. Which has specific language. That we make them sign, it says, and in that language says, you will adhere to the REO requirements. And they all say yes, and they all sign a slip, and then Liz and I chase them the whole job, you know, making sure that they're doing what they they need to do. Where it gets a little bit tricky. Is that your trade, your file subbid trade, such as your. Um, elevator. Plumber, heating contractor, electrician, uh, mason. Miss metals contractor, those people are filed trade bidders. So they put in a pre-qualification package. Which really has nothing to do with REO requirements. It's more on bonding capacity. Your revenue, are you capable of doing the work? Do you have lawsuits against you? If they don't. We have to, and they want to bid on a job, we have to. Take their bids, and if they're a low bidder, that's who we are governed to use. So that gets a little bit tricky. You know, we have more control with the non-trade bidders versus the the trade bidders. But it's, it was interesting what Fiore said, and.
But Frank, that was, you hit the nail on the head, and that's what I've been trying to say. They, DCAM doesn't look at that, so the city individually can look at that. There's a court case that I sent around. It's it's moving that ball forward from this point and getting guys like you guys, Fontaine, that want to do the right thing. And supporting it and getting all your competitors to do the same thing. You guys, listen, we hear the same thing at UMass. You're stuck with these people no matter what. But again, at the state level, because it's not a law, it's nothing can be done. It's got to be done through DCAM. DCAM can expand that category if they wanted to about responsibility of of. Diversity, but they don't. They just do it around contractors only. So again, as the city, we can form a committee to look at just the REO, and then we could. As a condition of bidding, if you have a bad record, we don't have to take you as a file sub bidder. That is a proven case. But again, it's going to take legwork and us as a city to want to employ them, but thank you for at least pointing that out because. That's my beef. We we we, you're stuck with them. I get it. What do you do about it? And that's the problem. How do we say? You know, and again, and and if we can come up with some, maybe some type of thing from you guys, I know you're flat out, but at some point, what? You know, how was it work with with contractors? An overall synopsis of this closeout, if you guys can just. How how, what did you see as the problems working with the contractors in your particular job? Whether it was meeting or not meeting some of the requirements, and not, any with, anything that we can learn going forward to educate ourselves. How to move forward, and again, this is all snail's pace. This doesn't happen overnight. But again, if we can get some feedback, it's what we need to, what you think we need to do, or what you found to be frustrating or found to work. To help you guys get your numbers and met. And again, I I got the hands tied with the file subbiders. I get that part. Thanks.
What, what, one of the.
Fury, I have a list.
Yeah, Liz is chasing them every day. That's 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 like one of her main functions is to chase these guys. And when she doesn't get anywhere with them, she calls me, and I'm the money guy. So I say, you want to get paid, you better play, and that's, that's what happens. Um. But uh, just in, just as an example. We had tremendous success, like working with Charlie, like. With the tradespeople that we've had, like the carpenters that. You know, I could, if if somebody was deficient, I could call Charlie, and he could help the the situation. One of the big file trade bidders, I won't name names, but there was a large file trade bidder on this project. That is non-union. It's an eight million dollar contract. They tried, you know, to the best of their abilities. But they they were non-union, so they didn't have the resources like going to Charlie and or. Uh, a Mason Union to to get help. So. Yeah, we really, it was just. Beating the door with them, saying, hey, you got to do better, and we're trying, we've reached, and Liz worked directly with this firm. Trying to get some individuals into different trade schools and. Um, some worked, some didn't. Um, so it's a process that we just got to work at. trying to get some individuals into different trade schools, and um, some worked, some didn't. Um, so it's a process that we just got to work at it.
And Fury, I mean, you sat down on, like, in one of those conversations that we were having with the contractor, right, which is huge, like, that's, you know, and we have been using this example with both our um, private and um municipal clients, right, of the REO um, policy working, right, and also having an REO committee where we can, you know, reach out to when we're having challenges and, you know, additional resources to help move, you know, the work forward. Um, you know, a- across the board, right? Because it's not just about this one project, it's about every project, um, you know, from here on forward. So um, thank you all really for giving us the opportunity to to work together hand in hand on this.
I have a question regarding, uh, if it's appropriate and and the degree of comfort that you want to respond, because it is, you know, group people, but um, has this experience made you guys, well, obviously, I assumed when you bid on it, you bid on it to make money and to, you know, you 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 serve the master, you know, we all work to be compensated. But how difficult has this been from Fontaine's point of view? And if you're not comfortable answering, that's fine too. But how comfortable or likely are you guys to continue to bid on city projects? Um, because, you know, uh, I'll start with that.
Yeah, I would definitely bid on city projects. You know, it was a good partnership with all of stakeholders in in the project. Um, this is not an uncommon situation. We, we're doing a project up at UMass, and it's the same, it's the same requirements, you know, it's the, they're the right requirements. So the people are trying to do the right thing. Smart people at the top are trying to do the right thing, and 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 we do our best to, to to do our part in that. I think it's, it's also, uh, it's important to acknowledge, you know, like, the people I work for are committed to this and have, have been an investment in the resources such as Liz, myself, that they put in charge of making sure that this happens. Some companies don't have that luxury. They're just, you know, they're just, they're not big enough. There's, there's not enough. Projects aren't big enough to sustain that, and they just don't have the uh, capacity. Um, we're blessed that we're able to to do that, and our our employers see that vision, so.
Well, that kind of leads into the next question. How much of a detriment is the fact, because you just kind of hit the nail on the head in terms of you being large enough to wherever you can write your, into your bid, anticipate and being able to pay Liz, to be able to pay your salary and put the infrastructure necessary in place for you guys to be successful and with the objective set before you. Now, smaller contractors who may be bidding on city projects, who, in order to qualify for the bid, to be competitive, uh, if they were to add in your salaries and the resources you need, would that, could that considerably limit the scope or the the pool in which we have to of bidders?
I, I, my honest answer would be yes.
And is that reflective?
I, I, I know the amount of work that Liz puts into it. I know the amount of work that I put into building the building. Two separate animals altogether. And a lot, I remember being on one of these calls early on, and I forgot the name of the company, but he was struggling, and he was the superintendent. He swept, swept the building, and he was in charge of the REO. I I don't know how a person can do that all and not lose their sanity. So.
Well, this is one for Lindsay, maybe because she's our financial expert here. Your perspective, you know, and once again, I I don't mean to put it, if you're not comfortable, or if you feel like it's not appropriate to have from the cities, you know, as a, as a point of the number crunches for the city. Um, is this REO, uh, the the goal of the REO is to get our residents and our neighbors and friends uh, working, uh, good jobs, you know, livable wage jobs. But from a city's perspective, is this doing more harm or is it doing more good? And if you want to bow out on that one, that's okay too. Because I'm hearing, and the reason for, you know, and let me preface that, it wasn't discussed as a party, you listed it on, you know, the water department project, there's some controversy over the project labor agreement. One side saying a significant increase because of it, others are saying otherwise. I'm not trying to dispute that part of it, and don't even want to go down that road on this meeting. I'm just, you know, objectively, from the city's perspective, as somebody who actually deals with the numbers overall, uh, because it's not just REO, it's just not construction, it's the entire budget. Um, and we, Lindsay?
Sure. So I can speak to that a little bit, and I won't speak on behalf of the entire city, but I can give you my thoughts from um, my position and what I do with the city. So we knew in passing and enforcing this REO, there was going to be a cost to the city. We knew that. Um, we knew that companies were going to have to hire staff in some cases to make sure that they were being able to abide by the REO, and therefore, you know, our costs were going to go up when these companies bid on projects, whatever. Um, is that to a point where we see a detriment to the city doing capital projects? No. Um, what perhaps, in addition to cost, may be something to consider, which I have not seen. Um, I have not seen, it's just a thought. If you do have, um, you know, when you're not talking about these big, big projects, when you do have um, vendors, potential vendors not wanting to bid on city projects at all, because they think it's too much work, or they think it's too much hassle. Um, I think that that could potentially be a problem, depending on, and I think, you know, we talk about this a lot. You know, what is, what is the conversation that the REO is having, especially with these vendors? Are we giving them a hard time? Are they making, are we making it so that they dread coming to these meetings and they dread dealing with us? Or is it a collaborative effort where we're trying to help them? Um, and like Frank said, trying to do the right thing across the board, right? So, um, I think it it could possibly be twofold. One, cost could go up. Again, I haven't seen that um, for any reason, be being a deterrent to continuing to enforce the REO. But secondly, um, when you're dealing with smaller projects, are potential lenders going to be turned off from dealing with the city because it's become so so much of a headache or so much of a hassle to have to deal with the REO? I personally haven't seen that either. Um, those are, you know, two things that I I think could potentially just um, come up at some point that we just kind of have to be conscious of, and especially when we're dealing with these vendors coming in. We, we don't want it to be a situation where it's very adversarial, and they dread coming in, and they don't want to deal with us. Um, I think it has to continue to be collaborative and both working together to, you know, which everyone think, I think here thinks is doing the right thing. Those are my thoughts on it.
Well, that sounds like something that Sean and Che would be dealing with more than us, because when we get, when they come before us, they've already filed the bid packet, and they've already dealt with the city. So that's probably something for Sean and Shay and, uh, more than us, then then in terms of when they come to us, they're already have, they are the warty generally, and then it's just a matter of, uh, you know, yeah. I, 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 I got, yes, thank you, Lindsay. And and Fiori, I, I, go ahead, Fiori.
Yeah, I just, uh, you know, so here we are, talking about multiple levels here, you know, and from my perspective, we're talking a general contractor, which is anywhere from here to here, depending on size and scope. Um, but, you know, when you, when you break it down a little further, the individual contractors themselves, it's no different for them than submitting certified payroll. They're supposed to submit their numbers to the general contractor, which would pass them, you know, putting in a spreadsheet, not simplifying, just don't get me wrong. But, you know, again, chasing the contractor, so it's, it is at some point, you know, eventually, our hope was to get contractors to realize the city is not going to play games. You are going to abide by the REO as a law. And, you know, again, if we could get stuff to come out smoother, it would progress and make life easier for general contractors. But, you know, when you still have to put things in perspective, Melvin, Fontaine is bidding against XYZ and X, so they're all competing against each other. So everybody is willing to sharpen their pencil. So at the end of the day, we are still in a competitive industry. They do, but yeah, is there cost? I'm not trying to say there isn't a cost. I'm just trying to say that it's not a free-for-all, because we do have competition, and and one guy's willing to do it a little bit less. Hopefully, the worker doesn't suffer at the end, because that's ultimately where they always want to save money, is on a worker's back, and that's not what I'm looking to do. Uh, there's a million other ways to cut costs. Uh, but again, that's all different stories. But I just want to point out, I agree, there are definitely some costs here, but again, if we could get stuff to go smoothly, it would be a lot less than what it is, especially for Frank and and large contracts. It would just be a lot smoother because it's not chasing these guys down, you know?
Well, my understanding is that Che and Sean are actually doing actively, trying to work with smaller contractors to get them certified, to get them qualified, get the work experience and things that they
Yes, sir. Awesome. Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, my apologies. Um, yeah, okay, I, that, that pretty much got, I, I got, you know, my, I have a higher degree of confidence and a great appreciation for what Fontaine has done, but also for the members of the committee and the work they put into this, and um, you know, um, appreciate Charlie always being here and um, his, uh, uh, we, we miss seeing somebody that's not here anymore with the carpenters, I guess. Um, and uh, so, hope she, hope her ears are ringing, because um, we, it was always nice to see her here. Um, and Sean, welcome. Um, I hope this was enlightening a little bit, and um, I hope it also, it was a little bit entertaining, and, you know, you're probably a little smarter than you came in with, because that's always a nice feeling too. Charlie, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I think you guys did a great job covering this.
Thank you. Uh, Liz, final word, Frank, final words?
I'm good.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Lindsay, nothing else to add?
Nothing. Thank you.
You know, you don't want, you don't want to call me any bad names today, or?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Okay. Um, well, thank you, everybody. Is there, is there any other questions or comments or complaints, observations, anything that anybody wants to vocalize while we're still here, Fiori?
All set. Give me a call later, though. I want to talk to you about something. Thanks. Have a great day, everyone.
Well, if there's no objection, I'd like to call into this meeting. Um, and I wanted to personally thank you. I haven't seen most of you, a lot of you since last year. Uh, some of you, I see you pretty regularly. Uh, but everybody, thank you very much for what you do. Uh, please try to stay safe, enjoy life, and just remember tomorrow's not promised to any of us, so just enjoy every breath. Thank you very much.